I now call the February ninth, two thousand sixteen work session of the Riverton City Council to order at seven P. M. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the pledge of allegiance and Councilmember Peterson will give us an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our eternal Father, we are grateful for this opportunity we have to come together as a, as a city council and a city, city group to be able to discuss the needs and the desires of the community and to be able to make it a, a safer place for us to live and to be able to have the opportunity to serve those around us. We ask you to please be with us tonight as we listen to those that are presenting to us that will be able to have an open mind and an open heart to be able to take into those things that are presented to us and be able to ask those questions that will make sure that we have a clear understanding of the presentation. And as always, we ask you to please watch over this great community and we ask of these saints, in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Would the city secretary please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilmember Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilmember Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Sean Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
I am present and we seem to be missing Mr. Bailey. Do you know, have you heard anything there?
Yeah, Your Honor, I believe he's out this meeting and the next one. He's.
Okay, all right. Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Bailey.
Motion to excuse Mike Bailey.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. I declare that we have a quorum. The chair, a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to reapprove the agenda as written.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Um, is there any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and motion passes. First item on the agenda is a discussion on the Veterans Park.
My name is Michael Higgs and I am the chairman select for the Riverton Veterans Park Committee. We had our first meeting, uh, the first Thursday of this month and our next meeting has been scheduled for the eighteenth of this month and what we're looking for right now is we've got a pretty good board of veterans on the committee and we're wanting more civilians. To that end, we have, uh, put in some advertisements in the paper, went to also put advertisement out on the radio so that we get more community involvement and get members from the community involved. Our, we did a, Jim over there did a, if you, you want to pass this around or can you see this good enough? Okay. That was a, kind of a mock-up for the backdrop with the walkway up and these are also, with our short-term plan is to go ahead and also aerial view. Go ahead, the short-term plan of course is go ahead with the aerial, uh, with the arrow, with the existing structures there, flagpoles and then, uh, things there. We want to do, uh, flags leading in. Pretty much utilize what is there and then as weather permits and gets a little bit nicer, then go ahead with the backdrop wall and go into our long-term plans. And again, some, uh, either forever, do, do, pinned in flagpoles where all you have to do is pull the pin, drop them down, easier maintenance. Now that, that's two concepts with the park. Wanted to see if the, as we got the community involved, do, uh, see if there was anybody that, uh, general consensus that they liked that or if we could, uh, come up with either something, uh, different or if they don't like it said, if they like something like that. There's certain things we already have, uh, like the Blue Star that we'll just move in and the Jerry Dix Vietnam, uh, little memorial stand. And pretty much that is it. Uh, we'll do, uh, like I said, more community involvement, uh, wall built, uh, we were coming up with ideas for, uh, like selling bricks with veterans' names and service states and theater of operation so that, uh, we could start more funds coming in. Uh, I've already put feelers out towards, uh, different businesses and have gotten a lot of, uh, really good positive results from them. And, uh, basically everybody's just sitting there saying, great, just get us something in writing. So, that's pretty much where we're at. We're just, uh, waiting for approval to go ahead, so that's where we're standing. Are there any questions?
Mr. Canaan.
Reason that, that, I think, I guess I asked the veterans to give us a little update on Veterans Park is that several months ago, uh, the veterans started talking about some of the additions they wanted to do to the park, uh, to make it, make it nicer and I don't think any of these things are going to happen overnight. Uh, they're, they're, it's an ongoing type project, ongoing type concept. Um, one of the things that you'll see probably within the next couple of weeks is we did up a, a memorandum of understanding between the, the various veteran service organizations and, and the city. Uh, and basically what, uh, what the service organizations wanted to do was that way to lay out as they did these improvements, uh, what the service organizations would be responsible for and what the city would be responsible for at Veterans Park. Uh, I think all the veterans, I think of all the commanders have signed, I think except one, and I think we're going to get his signature at the end of this week.
Yes, Your Honor.
I'll give that to, to Mr. Weaver and he'll get it on the agenda to bring it in so that the council can look at it, vote on it and go from there. But I think that was the, the good, the main idea was that before the veterans did any improvements, make sure that, that was, the city was going to be okay with those improvements and again, figure out who was going to be responsible for it.
Thank you. Anybody else on council have any questions?
So, is it the idea that, that the park will be, this is our park behind the building and those, those monuments would be there and erected with the names of the fallen on it, right?
That's one of the ideas, yeah, that they would do a memorial wall, yep.
Okay, thanks for coming. We're, we'll look forward to that MOU, so.
Like, uh, Mr. Canaan said, the, uh, it's pretty much all been signed except by, by one service officer and he's due back next week.
Okay.
And it definitely will be signed by then.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, good. The next item of business is Fremont County Prevention Coalition, um, discussion regarding raising fines for underage smoking.
So my name's Kelly Reese with Prevention Management Organization and with me is Lance Godey, who is the current chairman of the Fremont County Prevention Coalition. You should have in your packets our proposal. If not, I have copies. Okay. That's unsure. So as you can see, the first page is your current policy on minors in possession of tobacco, which right now stands at a twenty-five dollar fine and does not include anything as far as electronic cigarettes or vaping devices. In our proposal, we've added both of those in, including a change to what the fines would be for minor in possession of tobacco. It would go from twenty-five dollars to a hundred dollars. Part of the reason the subcommittee decided to look into this because after hearing from multiple high school students, twenty-five dollars doesn't make a difference to those children when it comes to smoking. Raising your fines, that perceived risk is actually an evidence-based practice to reduce underage tobacco use. Do you have any questions? I mean, you guys have this, I just.
Your Honor.
Uh, go ahead, Ms. Martinez.
Uh, I have one comment to make. Usually on something like this, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, but it's usually at the discretion of the, of the judge of what the fine's going to be. So if we raise it up to a hundred dollars, it could, she could, he or she could still say, I'm going to fine you twenty-five dollars, so that's.
Your Honor, let me address that. If, as a legislative body, if you pass a specific fine, then the judge is pretty consistent with that. Um, she does have the, the opportunity to fine various amounts when it's just a general penalty, but if you set a specific penalty, uh, then that, that serves as a guideline for her to know what the will of the legislative branch is.
Thank you.
That's part of the reason that if you, if you look at our proposed, it doesn't say "up to," it says "of" and that's part of the reason that wording was changed.
I don't have anything else.
Anybody else have any questions that they can ask here or talk about or? So the process on this would be?
Yeah, Your Honor, so we just bring it up at a work session to see if there's kind of general consensus to move on and then we'll prepare an actual ordinance. It will come in front of the council and there'll be three readings and you'll vote on it and move it forward if you, if you so desire.
And talk to us a little bit about e-cigarettes and vape products.
Um, right now, and I don't know, Chief, you can probably talk more about this than I can, right now what we're seeing is an increased use of vaping devices and electronic cigarettes among our youth. They're looking at it as a safer alternative to tobacco. What we're seeing is young children with vaping devices that don't have any tobacco in them, but that's encouraging those children to smoke. And as it stands right now in your ordinance, you do not touch on vaping devices. So in all actualities, if I'm being wrong, my twelve-year-old son could go in and buy a vaping device. That doesn't mean that he would be able to purchase the liquid that has the nicotine in it, but it's still teaching those children at a young age to smoke, which will then further them into actually using tobacco products. So what we're looking at is with this ordinance is hoping to reduce the amount of underage tobacco use in.
Your Honor, I guess my comment on that is that, uh, we're putting on a restriction that I think personally it should be the parents' duty to restrict them from buying anything. I, I'm, I don't like a lot of restrictions on them sometimes and, yeah, granted the nicotine that's in the vapors, they should not be allowed to buy it till they're eighteen years old, but the non-nicotine, until it's proven to me that it's harmful to you and, but to me, the responsibility lies with the parents to take care of that. And granted, it's not going to happen. A lot of times they, they go out and buy cigarettes anyway, somehow they're going to get hold of cigarettes though. That's the only reason I don't want to restrict the vapors.
Well, and what we're hoping to do with the vaping devices is by saying no to them, actually make it easier on law enforcement, because as it is right now, it comes down to a hard thing for them to go, okay, well, does this one have nicotine or does this one not have nicotine and wanting to do that. Was part of the reason that was added into this by the subcommittee.
Chief, is there any way to test for that?
Your Honor, I need to do some research on that. We do not currently have a, a easy test for nicotine like we do for like marijuana or methamphetamine, so I don't even know if that's available. We, we have never done that before, so I'd have to research that and see what's available, so I don't.
Thank you. Ms. Gibbon.
Why the big jump from two fifty to seven fifty?
I'll, I'll jump in. That way Kelly doesn't get to talk the whole time, um, which I'm fine with, but, um, I, there is, we, we attempted to mirror the finding process similar to what the state has in state statute. Um, in the two fifty and the seven fifty for a second and a third and subsequent actually mirrors the exact amount in the state statutes. Uh, the first violation is in state statute fifty, if I remember correctly. So it's actually a little higher for a first violation for the municipal change. Um, we just felt like to coincide with what if they're cited in, in, by say a sheriff's officer and cited into district court, that amount is what they would be, um, subject to for that citation through the, through that court. So we felt like, why wouldn't we want to make it as close to as possible? But we think the first violation up to a hundred dollars is, we've, the feedback that we've gotten from, from students is that that would be meaningful. Uh, twenty-five is not a meaningful fine amount, especially when repeats are twenty-five dollars. It doesn't go up past that. It's twenty-five dollars every violation, so, under the current, under what it currently is.
Mr. Larson.
I noticed that, uh, at the bottom it said his or her fine, court costs at a rate of five dollars each hour, work performed. I would certainly think that the limit, limiting activities is more important than money taken away. Have you considered work versus fines?
We did. I think in the subcommittee, there was a lot of discussion about moving everything from a hundred percent work to fifty percent work to no community service, you know, really kind of tried to look at a wide range. What would have, the goal here is to really have the most impact on stopping the behavior as early as possible, to put a little bit of skin in the game, so to speak, as far as that person, the, a person under the age of eighteen that's been fined and to have both a financial skin in the game and work community service as a, as a consequence and that both must be done and you only get up to fifty percent of your fine taken off. That way there's still, there's still that, that commitment on both sides, not just all work, not all fine, because then they could argue that, well, I'll do all this community service and it won't cost me anything financially. So, the committee, really, this was a, a consensus of the, of the subcommittee that worked on this is that.
Did they, did they consider the time? Other words, you know, some time is more important than other times and taking away important times certainly is better than throwaway time.
Sure. We've had a lot of discussions. Some of the members of the subcommittee are, for example, part of youth services and being able to, because that's how the court would mandate that monitoring of the community service is through what the, that might be youth, youth services, if that's the right terminology, to, to monitor that and it would be up to the, the youth services officer to facilitate that. I, I would probably argue they're not going to make it necessarily easy on them. There is that, you know, whether it's after school, af, on a Saturday, you know, whatever, it isn't going to necess, you know, automatically be the simple part. It's up to the youth services officer to work with that student and probably their parent to be able to facilitate that work process, that community service. But that's, that's how that would work, is the judge would, would, what the right term is, remand that to the community services officer to facilitate that and they would have a list of agencies and locations that they could work from, not just in this respect, but any youth violation that qualifies for community services, they facilitate that.
Your Honor. Thank you. Ms. Martinez?
I have another, of the, the fines that have been already assessed, the twenty-five dollars, how many of them fines, if you know, have been paid by the parents and not the violators? Cause it, if, if my folks paid my fines, I'd say, who cares? I'm going to go do it anyway.
Well, and that's part of the thing and I've worked, and I should probably give you a little bit of background, I've worked a lot with the school district, twenty-five kids that have been assessed a tobacco fine. We used to offer a educational class on tobacco that I would come in and facilitate and their, their ticket would go away essentially. From that class, I learned a lot, exactly what you're saying. There's some kids that their parent paid their twenty-five dollar fine, there's some kids that their parent didn't even know that they had that because they could afford the twenty-five dollar fine. Um, I had one youth tell me that his whole goal, his high school career was to see how many MIT tickets he could get before he turned eighteen. That was his whole goal, uh, because then juvenile records are. But the twenty-five dollars, it didn't pay him a bit and he was paying that out of his pocket. And so that's where we really started to see this gap in, the perceived risk is not there for these kids when it comes to tobacco use. They see no risk to it. Studies have shown that by increasing penalties through administration penalties, you actually see a decrease in your tobacco usage because of that perceived risk of, oh my gosh, now I have a hundred dollars, I gotta actually talk to my parents about this one because it's too much for me to pay without them helping or vice versa. Parents are going to feel a little bit more of a pinch rather than just really, here, here's twenty-five bucks, go do it. You don't get a ticket of gas this week. Wow, I have to give you a hundred dollars? It's a bigger fight. They're going to feel more of a pinch, which makes that risk even bigger for them.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson?
At any point in this, is there anything sent to the parents or is this all directly between the youth and the court if they decide to hide it from mom and dad?
In speaking with one of our members of our subcommittee who is an officer, he stated that there could be a possibility of a letter that would work, that would be sent home to the parents that would say, you know, Johnny has now received a ticket for minor possession of tobacco. Does that mean that the parents are going to get it or that the kid's going to steal it out of the mailbox? We don't know on that, um, but there is that option.
Mr. Larson?
Isn't that a kind of a lax way of presenting information to a parent? To assume that, you know, a registered letter, I mean, how important is this? Obviously it's important and if the parent is unaware of it simply because the kid is smarter than the parent, uh, isn't there some mechanism that the parent is required to sign or be made aware of this situation?
I'm not sure how it stands right now. I just know through conversations with students that have had these tickets, their parent doesn't know anything about it. I'm not sure how it works on the law enforcement side exactly, but I just know through those stories.
Or the parent might not care also.
That's also true.
Well, I mean, that's what I can see in the, in our current statute is that there, there's an affirmative defense, uh, if, if the kid smokes at home with his parents' permission.
Yeah. Throw the parents in jail.
See, so I mean, that's our current, our current code right now, you know, so really the only thing the parent would have to say is he's got my permission. See, it would be a.
But that only works at home, from what I understand.
So.
Or do they get a letter from mom and dad they carry in their wallet? I don't know how. You know, my mom says I can, you know, oh, I, it's just.
The direction.
Cause I, I remember being young and I, you know, you'd get stuff and you'd like, oh, mom didn't even know about that, I'll just take care of it, so, you know, how are we? Cause.
What was the comment you made a couple meetings ago about if everybody that owed us money, paid us money, we'd be able to build everything new?
Yeah, our outstanding fines right now are like two million bucks.
Yeah, so I mean.
Un, un, uncollectible, two million dollars. Uh-huh. Maybe we could use that for the revenue guarantee at the. So you have any feel for this? Do you want to, what, what's the, uh?
I, I, I think personally, Your Honor, but we should look into it and, and come up with some kind of ordinance myself.
Yeah, Your Honor, is there a general consensus that what they've presented is what we'll present or, or is there something you'd like changed that's differently presented?
Um, Your Honor, I, I'm still having a problem with the vapor thing, so, you know, that restriction, you know, you're, you're really restricting.
that restriction, you know, you're, you're really restricting a lot of stuff. And I, I'm not for restricting everything.
So, so you're saying electronic cigarette, you'd be fined leaving in there, but not the vaping device? Because electronic cigarette, I, that's different.
There's a difference between electronic cigarettes and vaping devices. Vaping devices, you actually add the liquid into the device before smoking it, which we're seeing an increase in marijuana and methamphetamines being actually used in those devices as a smoking. And so...
But the electronic cigarette is sold as a, as a seal.
I, I...
So that's...
I'm well aware what they are.
And actually, the wording for that is what Gillette used when they changed their ordinance and power to include those electronic cigarettes and vaping devices. We use their current wording when we looked at your guys' ordinance.
Is there something that the state of Wyoming is working on?
Possibly.
Mr. Peterson?
I, I think there's, I think this would be a good support in, to the resolution thirteen twenty-three that we did for the ballparks and the, the city areas to control the smoking. Um, and I think this would be a great way to help support that, where not only can we tell the adults not to do it because it's a bad, you know, we can enforce it with the youth. So I, I think there's definitely something to look at to carry forward on this one. And I agree with Councilman Martinez, maybe take a look at some of the, maybe a little bit more research on the, the vaping, you know, if we can come to it and understand what the, then it puts, you know, the police into a predicament, you know, do they have to stop every vapency and then how much time does that take to run a special test on a vaping to find out some kid's just going through the motions because he wants to look for if he's going through a...
And that is something that actually was suggested by Riverton Middle School personnel because they've seen an increase in kids walking around with vaping devices. And so that's part of where that came from going, okay, well, if they have to be eighteen and purchase the vaping device, will that help?
I would note that the state statute include, is, the problem we run into is that being able to prove that there is a tobacco product in the vaping device is the issue. And that the state statute already says that a smoking product, is that right? Tobacco product. Tobacco product is prohibited for under the age of eighteen, which includes vaping devices. So it's, it is kind of already included, but it's on the onus of law enforcement to determine that there's tobacco product in the vaping device. So in ci, in state statute, it, it is, I mean, we would be aligning our code with state statute. And, and really firming that up that, that, you know, we don't really care so much that it's, does or doesn't have. We're not making law enforcement try to figure out whether there's something illegal in, it's that having the device is enough to say, no, you, you shouldn't have the device if you're under the age of eighteen, regardless of what we can prove is in it or not.
Your Honor. Yes, Martinez?
In this ordinance, I would, if we decided to go this way, I would like to see something where the retailers who's ever selling the vapors and the oils would also get fined for selling nicotine.
Your ordinance already states that for the sale of it, then they'd be fined for selling a tobacco product to anybody under the age of eighteen. That fine already, your stat, your statute already has that covered in it as far as selling, or your ordinance, sorry.
Does that cover the vaping device or is that so new that it hasn't been put into the statute yet?
Um, vaping devices don't exist in any statute, but where you're speaking to tobacco product, correct?
Yes.
That is already illegal because it contains the tobacco and nicotine product is already in the ordinance. We looked at that as a subcommittee, because we want to make sure we're doing a piece of that. That's one way. Unlike, do you guys know, like, in a year, how many tickets you, they give out or do you know, you would take?
Your Honor, I don't have any idea off the top of my head, but I certainly can bring that to you Thursday at council, I can get you a hard number on that.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I'd like to know a little bit more about current enforcement activity. Uh, I'd like to, I'd like to see the wording on the state statute that we have at the present time, fine structure and that type of thing. Um, I'd like to, uh, maybe have some wording in here that deals specifically with deferred prosecution on first offense. Okay? Um, I'd like to see something like, uh, I, I guess I would like to understand better the difference between tobacco products and nicotine, because our current statute says tobacco products, doesn't prohibit nicotine. So, um, whereas with, you know, other dangerous drugs that we might come in contact with, we're not as particular as to how those are created, so they could be artificially developed, you know? I think there's, I think there's some information here that we need to get a little bit more.
I just, and I totally agree. If you note on, on item D in the proposed code, um, it expands the definition of, of tobacco product. I mean, I think, well, and that's the same in, or not the same, but the same concept in the state statute, is that you set the definition of what it means and then it's referred to in the code. So, so we certainly can define or expand the definition of what tobacco product means, but nicotine is, is referenced in the definition. So I'm, maybe I'm not sure if, if maybe we, you're thinking to add to the definition of what...
Well, I guess, Lance, what I see when I look at D, okay, it says, means any substance containing tobacco leaf.
Or any product made or derived from tobacco that contains nicotine. So a vapor liquid that has nicotine added would be covered under that.
Would then become, see, would become covered under that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, see. And so that's my, so that's, that's my, uh, yeah, nicotine law, yeah. Okay, so, all right, so we're going to work on this for a week or two or a month or something like that and try to come up with a little bit of additional...
Yeah, we probably won't be through it for, for next Tuesday, but it may be the first meeting in March or...
Okay.
Just depends on how much info we burn into.
Okay, all right. Good, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
The next item in business is Howard Johnson and he is going to give us a presentation on zoning. No, Stephen's going to start, huh?
Oh, yeah, you got to deal with me first.
Okay.
Something's flickering here, I don't know if that's a good sign.
Coming up.
Is it coming up? There it is. Okay, so I'm going to give a, a kind of a brief overview on zoning and the purposes of it, and then I'll turn it over to the master. The master. Um, so I'm just going to go through a few things and, uh, some of it relates to Riverton and some of it doesn't, and some of it's just kind of hypothetical. So, nothing strikes fear and loathing into property rights advocates more than the simple six-letter word, zoning. You think that's a true statement? Um, zoning is the most widely used technique for controlling land use and development. Um, Wyoming statutes fifteen-one to s, one dash six oh one through fifteen-one six eleven give us the authorization as a city to, um, institute municipal zoning. So, um, a brief history of zoning. In nineteen fifteen, the forty-two-story Equitable Building, uh, was built in New York City. There was a public outrage because the Equitable Tower would cast shadows over neighboring buildings and cause serious devaluation of property. In nineteen sixteen, New York City enacted the nation's first comprehensive zoning resolution. The intent was to promote and protect the public health, safety, and general welfare, establish height and setback controls, and separated residential areas from non-residential uses industrial and manufacturing. So what is zoning? Um, this, this is actually a picture of our zoning map that's right up here on the wall. It's just a section of it because I couldn't get the whole amount. So zoning is a regulation that dictates how land use can be used and the structures that can be built, such as the type, size, and height of buildings. Its primary purpose is to protect the general health and safety and welfare of the citizens. It also seeks to create stability by allowing a predictable range of compatible uses and building types and generally seeks to avoid negative impacts to adjacent properties or districts. A zoning ordinance consists of two things, a zoning map which you see before you and then the actual written ordinance. So this is the snapshot of, of, of our zone map. Riverton has fourteen zones. We have residential zones that are broken down into zones for single-family, multifamily dwelling. Uh, we've got A, B, BGA, and the BGA is kind of the ag component of the B-zone, um, which can also allow livestock on a half acre of ground. And then we've got C, which is kind of the multifamily. Whoops. I don't know how to... Okay. So then in the commercial, we've got CO, which you can see up here, if you can see if it's not too far away. Uh, CO is office and institutional, C-one is commercial, CH is commercial highway, CP is planned neighborhood shopping. And then in the industrial zones, we've got I-one, which is light industrial, I-two is heavy industrial, then MHP, which is mobile home park, PUD stands for planned unit development, AG agriculture, and AP is airport. So in, from the help of, of Courtney and doing some research, um, it looks like zoning started in the late nineteen thirties here in Riverton. Uh, it started to be rehauled under Howard Johnson's direction in the nineties, and that went on for several years. Obviously, the planning commission has a key role when it comes to zoning because they do a lot of the flushing out, they do the heavy lifting of these applications that come through that eventually make it to the city council. They make a recommendation and then it goes to the city council. So this is just an example, I'm not going to even go into a lot of this, but this is an example of one of our fourteen zones. This is the A residential, and you typically see what's, what's allowed. So under the, the uses, the uses are the ones that are allowed. If it's not listed there, then it's not allowed. It also goes through, uh, density, floor, floor area ratio, number of dwelling units on, in these zones, amount of open space, uh, required parking if any, lot coverage, distance from buildings and lot lines, and then there's obviously some variation between the commercial and industrial in those different zones. Feel free to stop me at any time if you have any questions. So what is the, what is the purpose of zoning? Zoning can be a, a very powerful tool, used to create a well-planned city that is laid out in an orderly fashion that makes sense, that benefits the citizens and protects property value. Zoning can be used in conjunction with a master plan to determine the growth of the city. Planning for the future helps a council determine, determine where it wants to grow and how it will grow. So oftentimes, when you think of zoning, you ask the question, so what do you want Riverton to look like in twenty years? Uh, in a study published in two thousand and six on the effect of zoning on economic development in rural areas, the authors concluded that planning and zoning facilitated economic development rather than impeded it. The authors summarized the benefits of zoning to include, one, business and citizen preference for land use predictability, two, assurance for business prospects and residents that their investment will be protected, three, the ability to guide future development and prevent haphazard, i.e. patchwork, harmful or unwanted development. And I can't move on. So we're just going to move on here. Okay, so this is a picture of, anybody can guess where this is located at?
On Drive.
This is actually Fresno, California. So I, I'm going to, I'm going to give you two scenarios that will kind of help with zoning. And I'm, I'm going to compare Fresno, California to Gilbert, Arizona. These are two areas that I've been, um, and they've taken zoning completely different. Um, and, and a lot of, a lot of areas around town do this differently. So Fresno, California, they have a lot of businesses throughout the community. This is a large town, population two hundred thousand plus. But they have one street that, that dominates the hall, all the commercial zone. And so when you get on Blackstone Avenue and go for miles, it is just one commercial establishment after another. Now, that is just one, that's one way you can do zoning. In a lot of ways, Riverton is, is that way. We've got federal and we've got Maine, and all of that is located on there, and there's not really a mixture of uses on that. And some people like that, some people like to have it all at once. I know when I traveled to Fresno, you could go to Blackstone and find anything you wanted. Uh, it was frustrating sometimes because on days where it was time to shop, everybody else was there too, and it was wall-to-wall traffic. So this is going to be hard to... I'm going to see if I can... Whoa, what happened? Okay. So you can see, this is... I'm hitting the wrong button. Okay, that's Blackstone. You can see that whole section down here is Blackstone Avenue, and that's, that's all commercial. That, that's just kind of a, to show how they, they've done zoning with commercial. And so now we're going to move on to the Gilbert. Now, Gilbert, they've done it quite a bit differently, and in a lot of Utah towns, they do it a lot like Gilbert. So you'll have these little centers here at the intersections where they'll have commercial developments on all four corners here. And then you've got residential mixed up all the way down there to the next intersection, and then you start with commercial. And like I said, there's pros and cons to all of this. This, this solution helps in a lot of ways because it divides up the traffic. You don't have everybody going to the same area. A lot of times, you have commercial centers like grocery stores, so people that live here can go right here instead of having to drive all the way up to the main area where everything's located. But the point of all this is, is to show the powerful tool of zoning, because as we zone, um, we can either have one or, one, or we can have Fresno, California, we can have Gilbert, Arizona, depending on how you, how you want to see the development. Now, in a lot of ways, that, a lot of that is dependent upon our master plan, and our current master plan doesn't do a very great job in showing what the future zoning should be, and that's something we should look at in the future. So when should we make a zone change? My belief is that zone changes should be made based on some sort of criteria so that it's not looked at by the public as being biased, favoring the citizens that want the zone change or the new business coming to town. This can be accomplished by two documents. The first is the master plan, which is meant to be the document that is looking to the future of the city and how we want to grow. Uh, obviously, in a master plan, I mean, the disclaimer with the master plan is, it really is a guiding document. It's not the law. It's not like our ordinances that state, this is the way it's got to be. Uh, but it can be a powerful document in determining if something should be zoned... But it can be a powerful document in determining if something should be zoned a certain way or not. Obviously, the master plan is a big public process. Most of you were around when we did ours back in 2007 and '08, and so there's a lot of public participation as how the town wants to grow. So this is right from our municipal code. And it provides some criteria that needs to be demonstrated to receive a zone change. Applicants are required to turn in an impact study that should point out the specific data of the following points. Is there a need for a zone change? The idea is to see if there is a lack of other comparatively zoned property to satisfy the proposed use. For instance, we had our last zone change that came up to council not too long ago, and we had to decide if we were going to move it from residential to commercial highway. Applicants would have to demonstrate that they couldn't put that in another section of town where there's a CH zone. Applicant has to show the impact of the surrounding area. Why is this the best location for a commercial establishment? That's what we should be asking ourselves. Not listed on this, but certainly should be considered, is if the change is in conformance with the master plan. So this is a map that comes right from the master plan, and it says, "Future Land Use Plan." I think in a lot of ways, how the master plan was developed is it went around and basically saw what was there and put it as that zone. You can see, there's a couple areas in here, and in here that says, "Future Urban Services", that have been identified what those zones should be. But anything else around there, it doesn't really identify that. And so I think that's something, if we update our master plan, that we need to look at. Reasons to not make a zone change. As I stated earlier in the process, it needs to be fair and based on some criteria instead of which way the wind is blowing. Some of the reasons I came up with for not making a zone change is first, money. Just because someone has some money and wants to buy the property is not a good reason for a zone change. Second, just because neighbors are for or against it is not really the best reason to make a zone change. It should be based on, is this the best place to change the zone? If it is the best place, then it may be appropriate to make that zone change. That may sound a little bit harsh because citizens obviously come in and they want to voice their concerns. But it does matter what people think, because oftentimes, in the discussions, we bring zone changes up, they come and justify some of those impact study questions of why there shouldn't be this particular zone around this property. Really, my point is if we make decisions based on who shows up, then we're making decisions on emotions and based on criteria and facts. And that puts the council in a different situation. Obviously, if you have documents to go back forward, either through the master plan or through your code, then you can say, we've predetermined that this property was going to be zoned in commercial in the future, and therefore, that's what we're going to do. Instead of based on what shows up in ways of, we want it or we don't want it. So just a few zoning administration and law. Zoning regulations must bear a reasonable and substantial relationship to health, safety, morals, and general welfare. There must be a reasonable basis for designating areas differently. And that goes back to some of... When we have zoning, we have to treat all businesses the same. There are a number of legal challenges to zoning provisions that can create red flags for a municipality. We need to guard against violations of the First Amendment, freedom of speech, and expression of other legal challenges. A couple of examples could be laws that single out a big box store, or no Walmart would violate that law. We've got exclusionary zoning that completely excludes a legitimate use or specific group of people from the community or an area. This could be a tattoo parlor, sexually-oriented businesses. You have to have good reasons to do those, or you could potentially be in a lawsuit with them to say that they're being treated differently than any other business. And then obviously, spot zoning is where you're taking one area and just disregarding what's around that and just changing the zone. And that's, in state statute, that's against the law. And then taking is the other one, and that's basically where you've taken someone's property, meaning it was zoned something for a long time, and then you change it to something else, and then they can't use it for any purpose at all. That's a taking, and they would have to be compensated for that. And then the final is private covenants. And I think we've talked about this in the past. The city doesn't honor private covenants, so a lot of HOAs. Homeowners' associations have covenants that they have on the properties, and that's not the responsibility of the city to enforce them. Okay. Any questions for me? Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to Howard Johnson. He's served on the Planning Commission for 25 years, many of those years as the chairman, and he's got a lot of experience in that. And he's going to kind of give us a history of what Riverton's been going through.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council.
Thank you, Howard, for coming.
You bet. I appreciate the invitation. It's been a while since I've been in these chambers. They haven't changed at all, though. Stephen called me and asked me to be here tonight to answer your questions, but also to make a little bit of a presentation about what the Planning Commission did during my tenure on the Planning Commission, which, as Stephen just said, was about 25 years. And as we all know, there's boom and bust cycles. And I can't remember if I came in during a boom or a bust, but I do know that over that entire period, there was several of them. And when there's a boom, it's frantic to develop property, do subdivisions, get utilities in, do that kind of thing, and it becomes a lot of work. And during a bust cycle, it's somewhat quiet. And I know, you all know, we've gone through several of those. So when I first got on, what we had, and I can tell you, we didn't have stuff like this. We had a map that was basically hand-drawn like that, or Leroy-drawn, I should say, about half that size, with all of the subdivisions and lots and streets on it. And we were getting requests for zoning changes, not that many, but we recognized that the map wasn't up to date, the rules and regulations. Seems like every one that came in, it didn't quite fit in a square. You know, it was always something that was a little different than maybe how the ordinance was written, and we had to look at that. And we worked closely with the staff through all those years. We took the map we had, and we sat in here at a table right here, and we went through every lot in the entire city. We knew what they were zoned, and we tried to say, is that the appropriate zoning? Because what we were going to do is review the entire thing, make recommendations to try and get it to more blocks like that, rather than a lot of little spot zones or things like that. And there was even a Zone D. It was an industrial zone that would allow hog farms within the city limits. Now, when we went through that process, we never zoned any property D, so we effectively eliminated D by not putting that on any of those pieces of property. So we went through that entire process, and I can't remember how long it took, but it took a long time. We worked after regular meetings, and then we worked in work sessions. And we had a map about half that size that was just covered with scribbles. And the staff kept trying to catch up, add it to a clean copy, and work through it and everything. And I can tell you, it's marvelous today to be able to do it with computers and colors and everything like that. But going through that, part of what we were looking for, we didn't want a spot zone. We wanted to try and be consistent. And as we looked from the map to the actual ordinances, we were still having trouble trying to fit things into a particular box or a particular zone, because the actual ordinances didn't fit what we were doing or fit the economy, you know, what the real world was like. So our second task, after we generally got that map done and had numerous public hearings through the city, Planning Commission, and through the city council, we finally got to the point where we had a map that showed that. And what we did, we left non-conforming uses, because you just couldn't eliminate all of that stuff. You were going to have some, no matter what you did. We stepped back from there, and then we took the ordinances. And we did the residential, then the commercial, and then the industrial. And we laid out all of the residential ones on the table, and we compared size, setbacks, all that stuff. We kind of worked through them side by side to try and get consistency to them, to develop them. So when we were done, and I'm going from memory here, I'm sure Sandy can look up all the dates and all the minutes, but we did all of the residential, and then it came to the city council, was worked on, plenty of public hearings through the Planning Commission and through the council, and we got each one of them done. And when we got done with that, we thought we had a pretty good system between the zoning and what was here. Now, the other things we got to work on, it's just not about zoning. We worked on master street plans. We worked on utility plans, because when somebody came in with a plat, we had to know, can the utility serve this? Is there access? Is the street? Do we have a vision that we want this to be a collector's street or something bigger and better? Like, for instance, Broadway going north, that last few blocks. You know, we worked on all of that stuff to try and do just what Stephen was talking about, to try and establish some vision of what we wanted out there. And as a matter of fact, for a period of time, and I don't know how long it was, the council passed, we even had half-mile zoning outside of the city limits. Because what we were trying to do with that is prevent something going on out there, and we've had several instances of that. A bunch of septic systems fail out on Riverview Road, the city and that group, you've got to have a plan and extend it out there to solve that problem. We were trying to at least think about where we could develop, what we could do, and have sewer and water, have facilities like that out there. And we had that zoning for a while, and from our standpoint, it worked pretty good, but it was real tough to sell to the general public because they thought that was, like Stephen said, kind of a taking of their property out there. They didn't like it, so that eventually evaporated.[1400.62] They didn't like it, so that eventually evaporated.[1148.08]